Welcome everyone here for the Hudson City Commission Regular Meeting, July 11, 2023. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please rise? Jill, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Balkis?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Arar?
Here. Thank you. Next item is a moment of silence. Do you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Thank you. Next item, public comments. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to address the City Commission on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Minutes of the City Commission, regular session dated June 13. Minutes of the City Commission Work Session dated June 27. Minutes of the ZBA dated June 20. Minutes of the Planning Commission dated June 21. I have a motion, please.
So moved. A second motion.
Been moved and supported. This is just a voice vote. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Next, item number six, we have a presentation on train derailment response. Chief Essenberg has volunteered to lead this discussion and presentation to us. So Steve, would you please take it away?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. Our guest speaker tonight is from CSX. His name is Scott Carcher. He is a member of their special ops or special police force there and is very well versed in the CSX operations. Also in attendance tonight, we have Lou Hunt. He is the Ottawa County Emergency Management Director. That's Lou here. And then also Craig Sterling, he's our captain on our fire department, but he is also the hazmat team leader for Ottawa County. These individuals would be very key in any operation that we would have on an incident regarding a train derailment or a train incident. So with that, I'm going to turn the word to Scott.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. How are you, Steve?
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it, Chief. Very much. My name is Scott Carcher, manager of hazardous materials for CSX Transportation. I'm a walker when I'm a talker, so I'll stay kind of. I'm a special agent with CSX Railroad Police, but my primary function is hazardous materials. I cover states of Michigan, Indiana, Illinois, Ohio, Saudi, and Canada. I have fifty-three counties under my task that I'm responsible for throughout CSX folklore. My contact information, if you would like it, is up there, email as well, and I can send that to you if requested. This is just going to be a real quick, brief overview of CSX. Some of our guiding principles of operating safely, improve customer service, reliable efficient operations, optimize asset utilization, and value and develop employees. You might see that value and developing employees is at the end of this line, but in my opinion of it, this is what generates one CSX principles. It is actually first because we actually value and develop our employees in order to optimize our utilization concepts, our running rate, being able to have reliable operations, improved customer service, which you are our customer base as well as our customers that pay for our shipments and transportation goods, and operating safely. And in that scope, in the operating safely scope, that stems for incidences that occur not only on the railroad, but also, I apologize, this thing's going difficult on here. Let me go back. Okay. So, reaching out to fire departments, things of that nature, and ensuring that we're trying to upkeep training with your local first responders. We have 22,000 route miles for CSX. My corridor, obviously, in this slide here, you'll see some of our main terminals. We also have a terminal that's in Holland. We also have a terminal that is in Grand Rapids as well, so that's your main terminal that's here in Kent County. We have 22,000 route miles. We have one of the most advanced intermodal facilities throughout North America, throughout the Class 1 freight. We have 2240 shortline partners that we connect with, plus 70 ports throughout the United States. And we have liable services with transparency through our trip plans, our trip optimizers. We invest a lot of capital investment in our communities, trying to make sure that they are safeguarded. In the years past, including last year, we had succumbed to $1.8 billion, or for upgrades and safeguards throughout communities. We also shipped in your communities 3.3 million carloads of product, and that's nationwide. We have about 21,000 to 22,000 employees. We assumed took over the Pan Am Railway, which operates through Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, and that territory as well as Massachusetts. We split part of that off with Conno as well. They gave us an additional 2,000 miles of line that we can run throughout the northeast corridor, so we have 29 states that we operate and function in. So, one of our biggest pursuits is relentless pursuit of safety. We talk about communication. Communication with the railroad is two ways. One way is your way, communicating with the railroad in issues and times of need, as well as CSX is communicating back to the first responders. When we have an incident that occurs, your first responders notify dispatch, they contact our PSCC or our Public Safety Coordination Center. In turn, they relay that information out to me if it's a hazardous material issue or something that needs to be addressed for my team. So, they relay that information to me. I automatically get in touch with the local first responders that are on the scene. I will then generate phone contacts as necessary with the National Response Center, MDQ, or Eagle, through any of the local magistrates, and then local municipalities as far as reaching out to contractors, getting them facilitated so we can come and we can remediate our issues. Technologies and training, we, again, put 1.4 or 1.8 billion into, a lot of that training comes from that 1.8 billion. We take new technologies that we have, upgrade your fire departments, such as our RIT train, our responder incident training train, which is a completely full facilitated train of tank cars, valves, and fittings, things of that nature, where we can actually get your fire departments or your first responders, like your police departments, involved, get them on top of these tank cars, introduce them to the valves and fittings so they can apply the proper kitting if they have a hazard team, and get them a little bit more comfortable in how to handle these situations while we're assisting you in getting your community back in running. Last year, we had, our FRA report of incidences were down eight percent. That's huge for a railroad. Understand that trains derail every day, all right? Understand that trains derail every day. A derailment is considered one wheel off the track on the ground. The highest majority of your tracks or derailments that occur, excuse me, happen in yards. Very slow speeds, going through a switch, pushing and pulling, running the switch, wheel jumps the track, lands on the ground. The one offers are the big derailments, they don't occur as much. You will not see those often as you do, especially like the East Palestine, I don't want to get into that, but those type of incidences are very, very, very rare, all right? High level emergency, but extremely rare. 2021, 2022 was a great year for us. It was the first year that CSX as a whole did not have one fatality as far as employee fatality, and this is the first time it's happened in 200 years. So that's the exception. This year, unfortunately, about a month ago, we had a training, conductor training that was hanging outside the car, slipped, fell, and his life was taken. He was about 23 years old, just started his career with the rail, and unfortunately, that took place. But we have had zero incidents until that time for the last two years. Part of our infrastructure management that we spend is through positive train control, if you're not aware of that. That was mandated by the federal government so that the trains and communication devices that are on the tracks can communicate with the crew in a timely manner. We have what's called a dead man's switch, for lack of a better term, but that's what it's called inside the locomotives. These engineers and conductors are prompted throughout intervals when they're traveling to acknowledge by pushing this button that shows up on their screen, and they have to announce that they see and where they're at at that time. What positive train control does, in the event that we have an incident on a train where we have a conductor engineer that are out of commission, that they are not functioning as mandated, positive train control can slow that train down, get it to a safe speed where it can actually stop, and then we can get people there, first responders, to take care of that situation or address that situation, find out what's going on. Our drone program, we have a massive amount of drones that are out there, and this goes out for the fire department, police departments as well, our special agents. We have a select few that do have drones that we utilize for blitzes and things of that nature, and we can bring those personnel into a scene and utilize them in a long course with capability if needed. All of our manager train operations, the majority of those folks have licenses to fly the, permit to fly the drones. We utilize that technology to watch our crews. So when they're in areas that are low profile, out of the way, that you really can't get to with a vehicle behind industry, our MTOs will fly drones over to ensure that their personnel are doing what they're supposed to be doing and not taking shortcuts so we can prevent injuries and making sure that they're actually conducting themselves in a proper manner. We have also a drone or technology with this K-9, which is brand new, that you see there, and we have like three of those right now in circulation in the cell. And what those do is they work yards. So it's taken manpower out, bringing technology forward, where these K-9s will actually walk the trains and they can have air monitoring equipment on them, they have cameras, they have infrared in as well, so they can actually go down a train and they can either sense gases or sense issues that are going on. They can also take pictures of the bottoms of cars and issues that they're seeing, and infrared eyes, obviously, we don't have that, so it can actually see things that the human eye can't see when it comes to trains. Autonomous inspection technology, so we are integrating some new systems in the southern regions, and we are updating that. We'll be across the entire CSX line eventually, but it is starting in the south and it's migrating to the north, and it's going to the territories that are the heaviest populated, which are the east coast territories. One such a timeless technology that we have, obviously, is heat defect detectors that we have on the tracks. We have those heat defectors, this isn't working, you hear that flag? Thanks. So, heat defect detectors, which we have along the tracks, probably about every 15 miles. And what those heat defectors do is they will actually read the cars as they go by, and they can, they're called hot box or heat defect detectors. So what they will do is they will actually be able to count every single accident that's on that train as it passes, and it can read the temperature of that wheel as it goes by, and it has a set alarm for when it actually acknowledges when those wheel sets are hot. East Palestine, that's what caused the derailment, was a hot box or a hot wheel period that ended up derailing the train. So we do have these placed along our tracks. We're trying to increase them to up to 10 miles in stretch instead of 15 miles, but there's no law that says that they have to be set at certain intervals. We are trying to be proactive and create that and make sure that it sets at a given timeframe. The other autonomous inspection port that we have, and these are the newest ones that were coming up, with these, they're large canopy setups where the trains will go through them, almost like a toll booth, and they can be traveling at 70 miles an hour, which I think this actually was taken at about 55 miles an hour in this picture, so that's the clarity of how fast each cameras are. They take complete pictures of the underside of the cars, the sides of cars, the ends of cars, and the tops of the cars. And what that allows us to do from an inspection standpoint, and I'll get to that when we come here in a couple of minutes, and you'll understand how many cars get inspected in a year, but through this autonomous networking, we can inspect each and every single car, and if there's a defect at that car, if we have an issue like this particular one showing bottom of the car, that little plug that you see is a secondary outlet plug, has to be in place by law to prevent any extra spillage coming out of the main bottom outlet valve. If that was hanging down, it would automatically notify us that it's hanging down, and then we could get the train stopped, get it taken care of. What the beauty of this is, it's AI, so it's intelligent, it's reading, it's learning, and if it misses something, we can, if an anomaly comes through and we say it missed it, we can upgrade that computer and make it learn to say, you need to catch this the next time, and then it will circulate through the next time through that process. So, on a community side, 11,900 grants were given last year. We've interacted with over 350,000 people, military outreach and people in need over the last year. We have well over 7,000 employees that volunteer our times throughout their network, and we were rated for best disability inclusion group, and we also have two or three different types of inclusion group based on race, disability, and human needs in our railroad itself. So we are continually progressing on a human scale to be more empathetic to folks and be more understanding from that side. The old way of the railroad no longer exists on CSX. You see that in some other railroads, but you will not see it on our areas. If we come into your community, you don't want that incident to occur in your community. Unfortunately, it travels through the community and there may be an incident, but we are there to take care of it, and we will handle it from the beginning to the end and ensure that your community is going back together like it's supposed to be. Can't always cover all the scars that happen in the world, but we can make things better than what they were, or try to make them better than what they were. Go ahead. So this is just a general map of our hazardous materials coverage, so this is our corridor that we have. You'll see that we have a lot of red little dots on there, we have approximately 10 on there, six managers in the field, we have two directors, and we also have two other managers that are down in Jacksonville, Florida. We are in the process right now of onboarding two more managers, and we will onboard another two for a total of four by the end of August. So it'll like stretch this area out and it'll shrink our coverage area down, give us a better response time. My furthest response time, I'm up in the blue northern region there, is the Midwest area. I have about a four-hour maximum response time to anywhere to the west, to Ottawa, Illinois, to Willard, Ohio, is generally where I go. I got it covered down in library as well. So, when I talk about autonomous inspections, our team of six or eight, we've managed, part of our task during the year is emergency management as far as emergency response, training, and then compliance. So, part of our compliance issue, through the year, of course, of last year, we had 1,471 projects that we completed for the year. Those could range from anything from animal stricken on the tracks to mail-in derailment to a diesel fuel spill to lubricating spill, what have you. Training and personnel, over 2,700 personnel were trained, 50 training events throughout the United States. We travel about 70% of our life away. I am married, but my wife doesn't seem to think so because I'm always on the road. So we took over 200 compliance inspections last year. To say that the rail is a safe means a travel is not a stretch at all. Our record is 1%. We stand by that for the most part. We had over 640,000 petroleum-based product tank cars alone last year that we transported. Out of that, we had 51 non-accelerated releases, which means that's a release of product that happens non-mechanically. In other words, if it doesn't derail and puncture a tank or something of that nature, it happens from a valve or a fitting. Out of those, 51 confirmed non-accelerated releases, we had zero impact to the environment, we had zero impact to employees and/or the public. So if you divide 646 into 51, it comes up to like 0.078%, all right? So, 1% of 99% of the cars did not make it to destination without an issue. So 99% of all of our cars made it to destination without an issue. We are a common courier, so when you have people in your jurisdiction that are always concerned about why is the railroad transporting the commodities that we transport, we are a common courier. We have no right to refuse, we have a legal right, but we can't refuse any material that comes into our hands based on the package. So if the customer asks that we ship their product and their package meets specification, we do not or cannot refuse them, the industry as far as for shipping that product. As I was telling the gentleman in the back, think about it this way, your biggest, and you know, think about your biggest violators, and they're really not violators, but your biggest proponents for hazardous material are on your roads. UPS, FedEx, all right, postal service, DHS, all these other small trucking companies, they have more hazardous materials on a regular basis or daily basis than would actually run on the rail through your neighborhood, all right? Those are the concerns. Those are the bigger concerns because you handle how many more traffic accidents a year than you do train derailments or issues that occur. If you take a box to the post office and you say, I need to send this to my grandmother, and they say, what's first item? If you had firearms, tobacco, alcohol, right, or batteries, and you know she loves to shoot your egg smoke and swear, and you say, no, we don't have any of that stuff, right? But you package it and you send it to them, they're obligated to take it. They have to take it by law, whether they see it or not. And then they can run it through an extruder machine, and then eventually find out, and they turn it over to the post inspectors, and then they handle it from that end. So, any shipments that come out on the rail, we have to take. We don't have the right to refuse it. However, there are certain commodities that we have shipped in the past that when we have derailed them or we had incidences with them and we have them contained or controlled by package, we have the right to refuse to do anything with that package other than to get it back to the customer itself that created it, the shipper, and have them offload that product itself. Incident command, in the event of a large-scale incident, irregardless of who it is, your local fire department's going to be incident command. CSX will never assume incident command, however, we will walk with incident command to make sure that they are fully aware of what our plans are and how we will address the situation. Myself, I live in Clarksville, so I'm 30-minute response to Grand Rapids if need be, or 40 minutes to here. I'm always a phone call away, everybody pretty much has my phone number that needs to have my phone number, and if you don't, please, I'll give it to you. I don't care if they call me day or night, it does not matter, answer your questions and put some things to rest for you. But we do use the incident command system, we fall right into it. I primarily am the operations side, until I'll be incident command to start, but I'm going down to operations side so I can handle my contractors and get them in and get them taken care of so we can get the issues that we have taken care of. And then, again, training opportunities that we have, this is our RIT train, I just got done with a two-week stint teaching in Chicago. This is a great resource for fire departments to have because it's a safe place, safe learning place. It's controlled environment, we can actually put leaks, air leaks, we can put water leaks attached to this, we have compressors and we have water stations that we can conduct that kind of stuff, so we can actually have real live interaction with fire departments in the event we need to do a tabletop exercise. We can go from a ground roots tabletops to exercise to a full-scale exercise in a field and start coordinating all that information and have that live developing incident going on, where we have our incident command sitting in the rear focusing on what's happening and then utilizing all the media and all the intel that we have to negate an issue that we have. We offer ERRI training, which is emergency response for incident training, either myself, I come to the local firehouses or police departments, or to an LAPC meeting, or something like this where we can set up that type of training, all the way up to high technical training as far as, you know, chemistry side of things when it comes to rail cars, technician side of things, and anything else that you can think of, you know, anything that we can come up with as a training tool. I welcome any questions that you might have. It's just a very small introduction to what CSX is. I've been with the rail for 16 years, I've been in law enforcement for 26 years, still a special agent, like I said, with CSX. I plan to retire in five years and move forward from there, so.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Comments? I have just one, that last slide you had up with the first responder training?
Yes.
Chief or Dave, I mean, is that something that our folks could take advantage of?
Yes, we had one in Lansing. I broke my foot, I couldn't be there. It was my schedule meeting. But it was a few years ago, and then we had one in Grand Rapids as well. So that's something, if I can get it local to the general area, then I can do that. We put up all the cost for this. So this is a train that we have put together as a hazard team, this belongs to us directly, and we absorb all the cost for that, so just a normal getting it here from point A to point B, you're looking at probably $50,000 to $60,000 in transportation just to get it to the spot, and that doesn't include setup and contractor costs and getting everybody in and getting everybody through, so. But it is affordable and it is available too. Now, right now, we have been slotted and we are building a trailer, that is a dome trailer, which has valves and fittings. It's a 16-foot trailer, it's a training trailer, it's going to be packed with all kinds of stuff, and we are actually going to be able to take that out in the field to local fire departments. And when we do our advanced training or just first responder training, things of that nature, we will be able to roll that out where they can get their hands on valves and fittings and see how they operate. I teach, or assist to teach down at the hazmat center down in Lansing when I'm asked to. I give conferences and things of that nature that they ask me to as well. So please take advantage of it. It's open to the public as well. Public can come in and if they want to see how things operate, you know, they're more welcome to come in. I challenge every manager, I challenge, actually, I shouldn't even say manager, I challenge every leader of every community, come to my event, please, just so you can see what these guys and gals are going through, to have a better understanding of what they're, you know, it's not like you're going to go run out there and put a wrench on something. I don't expect that. But what I would like to see is having those personnel that are key personnel that are asking those questions to be knowledgeable of it and aware of it, so they can ask the questions to these guys and then they can relay that information back to us. One thing I would like to also add, density studies, you can request a density study from CSX, it's proprietary in nature. We do that for two reasons. One, obviously, we have competition out there. That's not the primary reason. Primary reason for security, okay? So your EMA directors, your fire chiefs, people in a mayor position can request a density study to see what commodities are flowing through your neighborhood, okay? I will tell you, I will not get into what you have coming through here, but I will tell you, your top 10 commodities that come through here, majority of those are energy-related, gases, ethanol, you know, because we obviously live in a cold country, you know, we have to have Lp, butane, things of that nature that come through here. So, we have those acids, acid gases, and the ethanols that come through here for the most part.
Okay.
We don't have any alchemical depth trains or anything, I want to put that to rest, okay? This is probably not something you got to worry about, we don't get VCM through here, all right? We may get some styrofoam that we come through here, but we don't get commodities that people think that, you know, the whole world's going to fall apart if something happens. We have the technology, I have the resources. If an incident occurs on this railroad, I have resources at my command within two hours response time to get to this location and start handling everything that needs to be handled. And if I can't get them here that fast, or if they're in route, I will commandeering And if I can't get them here that fast or if they're en route, I will commandeer whatever I need to commandeer to start getting things going. We have everywhere from ditch diggers that we need because when we have commodities going to the ground, we need people that can do shovels and work, all the way up to rock scientists on our payroll. And we utilize those people as professionals because that's what we expect, you know? That's what you expect, you know? We have to be able to bring that to the table to reassure you that if things go wrong, we have this under control, all right? We do have it under control. I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Yes. You said derailments happen daily, the vast majority of the time they're in the yard?
Yes.
How many times a year typically en route?
En route?
Yes.
I, I really couldn't put a big number on it. I would probably say we might have, this is hypothetical by the way, so please don't quote me on this, maybe 20 to 30. I mean, we have derail, like I said, derailment, a big scale derailment, I bet we had six last year that were decent sized derailments, you know, that we had to deal with. For the majority of the parts, you know, no big time releases, no, you know, the, the cars are constructed to take the abuse that they're actually in the environment. And when, you know, we're in a phase out period right now for our DOT 111s and our CPC 1232s, which is in our ethanol fleet. All of those are outlawed now. So we're bringing those in and we have a system set up so if any of those cars come into our system that they, customers try to sneak them in and they're not designing them, by law, they can't haul these products because they're just, there's a law against it because they're not capable of doing it. That's why we went to this 117, DOT 117 tank cars. So we have a system in place if one of these slide through, which happened to me in Chicago this last week, we have a red flag pops up automatically and we can catch it, set that car up. And then I have to conduct transfer operations and get a car and do transfer operations in a qualified car. And then that other car will go for dismailing or other use and it cannot be used in, in that life service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Scott.
I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Scott.
Moving on to item number seven, Terra Station project update from Beneclozin Development. Is there anyone from Beneclozin who would like to address this issue?
Hi, I'm Chris Beneclozin, developer with Beneclozin Development. I think you've seen the two plans that we've had that we've been talking about and heard some feedback. We're essentially looking for extension. We've, I think the understanding we're pursuing the alignment with Harvey is the, is the desire. And really what's been happening since last time I was in here is working with staff to try to come up with a plan that works best for the city and still meets our financial requirements, which the two options that have been presented are do both. The, I think what's been explained is that option, I guess I'll call it one, or what the option aligns with Harvey, we don't meet the parking requirements that included the public parking for the city. So we have enough parking for our development, but not enough parking for that additional, I think it's 30 spaces. The option where we align the road with Terra Square, we do have that surplus parking, but again, it doesn't align with Harvey. Both, we can do public roads, however neither would be to the Wunorf design, which is the paper, it was the planters, maybe more typical public road that would be made out of asphalt. Still could be Wunorf-ish, you know, it could be narrow, it could have that walkability. We've worked with the city on how we designed that. So what we're looking for is feedback, which I think we received some, then we just, we're ready to go. We've been sort of at a standstill as we go back and forth on the side, but we're ready to jump forward. The MEDC deny our initial request with this revision and the revision of our costs. We reviewed that with the MEDC. They've sort of verbally blessed it, but we basically, if, if we get this extension, our next step would be to resubmit the MEDC, the O C application is 95% complete, we just have to change some dollars and then start the process and move forward and in earnest. So that includes getting their LY, proceeding with architectural drawings and the rest of our due diligence items that go from there. Just so you know, I haven't been just sitting on our hands since this whole thing started over a year ago. Quick recap, we, we applied for the RAP 2, RAP 1.0, which we're denied. We then advised our, our documents, we resubmitted or we submitted to the MEDC, which because of RAP, they had a huge backlog and their response time was probably triple what they explained to us. So instead of like one to two months, it was almost six. They denied our application because of our costs. We've realigned those costs and at the same time, interest rates doubled, construction costs, I wouldn't tell you about it enough about those. So we've worked with, with city staff to get to a point where we have a viable project. We're ready to push forward. We just need more time to get it done, but you will see over the next couple of months significant progress as we get drawings going beyond just what you've seen already and the rest of our due diligence that comes with that.
Thank you. Is that all for you? Tyler, are you good?
Yeah, unless you have questions.
Tyler, you want to chime in on this?
Yeah, I just want to say, really appreciate Chris, your involvement, working with staff. There's been a lot of options, you know, especially with the changing market, material costs, interest rates, you know, kind of throws a little wrench in it, you know, at every turn here, especially when you consider a project of this magnitude. Chris, just to go over timelines we discussed earlier this week, you know, you just mentioned we're 95% there with the MEDC, MEDC application. Working, you know, we've had great dialogue. City Commission had a great workshop a couple of weeks ago with regards to discussions these designs. In looking at timelines here, just to make sure everyone's on the same page and, and just so the commission knows, we're looking at formal MED submission, dot the i's, cross the t's in that last 5% within the next two to three weeks. And then, you know, with the MEDC guidelines as it relates to the grant program, I know they say roughly six to eight months. They have been exposed to this project. You've been in contact with them. We did meet with members of the MEDC a few months ago with regards to this project. You know, one of the big questions that City Commission, members of the public have asked me is, you know, when we're looking at a realistic timeline here, you know, in terms of, you know, next steps, you know, is there a chance in your mind that we can have an answer from the MEDC by December? Or do you think that's going to be cutting it too tight? Are we looking into the start of the year, new year?
Uh, we, we, so there's kind of two steps, which I think most departments were. There's the LY, which that's what we applied for once already. That's the part that's 95% there. We resubmit that within, so we get that two to three weeks. Generally, we should hear back from them within 30 to 45 days. That LY is non-binding, but generally if we abide by what we said we're going to do, they abide by what they said they're going to do. So then there's a whole bunch of paperwork that has to get done between that timeframe, which is a four-ish month process. And for what we're applying for, which is this MCRP grant, we have to go to MSF Board, which is the part of the MEDC. That's a 45 day submittal in advance and then the board meeting. With the holidays and everything, December is probably optimistic, but our expectation is we will be at that board meeting by January or February. Once we have approval, it's, I believe, happens pretty quickly from there. So our, our plan, I could tell you December, but like I said, that's, that's really optimistic, but we'll try because we're, we want to get this thing dialed in as quickly as we can as well. But if that were the case, it was January, February, we're closing shortly thereafter. Benefit is almost all drawings are complete, so we're permitting and we're starting construction next spring, whether, whether permitting occurs.
Thank you, Chris.
You good?
And once you get MEDC approval, can we expect within a 30 day period that the purchase would be finalized and executed? Once that approval is realized, that...
No, so the, the way the purchase agreement is written, we can't close until we have the final MEDC approval because without that, we can't get bank financing or anything. All that has to stack together.
Again, once you get that...
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Then within a maximum 30 day period, we can close?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, give or take. But so once, once we have that, and we're going through this on a project in Whitehall right now, there's, there's a bunch of final documents that all get done. We're two and a half weeks from that approval in Whitehall and our plans will close in July 30th with banks, so that will trigger closing with, with property as well. So we're calling 30 to 45 days.
Any other questions for Chris? Oh, go ahead.
We're moving forward with the Harvey alignment. That's, that's understood.
Talking with Chris, yeah. With, I talked to Chris earlier this week. We will look to amend the purchase agreement, which will be necessary as part of the, the paperwork process within that timeline. Taking feedback from the workshop, you know, I talked to Chris and best practices among developers, if Chris is satisfied with the parking for the development, then the city shouldn't be a barrier. We've talked about the need of public parking in that area. Staff has worked on some good options, as the City Commission has been briefed on. So that will be one of the items that will be eliminated from the, from the purchase agreement, as Chris said. With the Harvey Street design and the layout, it's tough to get those 30 spaces in there. But when we talk about options on Prospect Street, future parking, that we're going to have to figure out as a, as a municipality with regards to the Village Green, that'll be factored in. We're talking, you know, 30 spaces, which is substantial, but, you know, in my opinion, and I think after feedback from the City Commission, you know, to have that Harvey Street connection, so to call it, on School Avenue being the priority, I, I think that's the right direction, in my opinion.
But that's, that's what we're moving forward with. We're not going to come back with another discussion on a different alignment. We're going to align with Harvey done.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I might add, the, the big sticking point here was trying to find a viable way with some of the challenges that Chris mentioned to continue that Wunorf style. And just the cost is, it's, it's the break kind. But this does allow connection downtown, looking at the strategic plan, master plan, the vision, you know, the Village Green, this fits that. So that's what we're waiting for.
Can you clarify for me? I think I understand, but I just want to be sure. Aligning Harvey Street with this new, aligning Harvey Street in this Plan A that costs 14 spaces, correct, for the development as a whole? And that's not including the public parking portion?
You're talking about from as compared to the other option?
Yes, yes. So alignment option versus the not alignment option that costs 14 parking spaces. The way I see it?
Oh.
Is that correct?
Yeah. So the, this account on one, they're counting the spaces on Prospect. There's been so many versions, I apologize. So the, the one that aligns with Harvey, the 219 counts the spaces on Prospect. The proposal that aligns with Terra Square, that 233 did not count Harvey on Prospect. So the net difference is that you're more dramatic than what that you're doing and what else the architect just made a calendar error. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Chris, with that being said, can we get that updated and document provided so I can circulate that to City Commission?
Yeah, yeah, we would. So we, knowing where the direction will immediately tighten up that site and get those details all confirmed. We're, we're moving things around quickly, trying to get back and forth to keep the project moving.
So one more follow-up to the parking itself. These are parking spots referring to just for the tenants of these, these apartments, right?
Correct.
The public side is separate. These are public parking spots, correct?
They are not.
They're not public parking, correct?
They're not.
Yeah. And was there, we were talking about a smaller parking area for the public as off to the side of this?
We have options with the purchase of, the DDA purchased the McAlpine park, well...
Different property.
A different property just north of the commercial area. And there's, the DDA has not figured out how to move forward yet. There's a financial aspect that takes into consideration, but one of the thoughts and discussion with staff is, is that a potential development opportunity that may include parking as well? The city has that, the city and the DDA, excuse me, we have that opportunity. We're not there yet in that, but part of the grander picture.
I just didn't, that helps. I just didn't know if those, now if we're combining those parking spots in these numbers. So I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Yeah, good, good question. You know, and we have brought up in our meetings about the McAlpine property. This is obviously the priority, timeline, construction costs, you know, pro formas, but that's something that we have talked with Chris about and will continue to pursue and see if a potential relationship can be made. But regardless, this should be considered as part of the downtown area development here.
Any other questions for Chris or clarifications? Okay. Chris, thank you for coming in. So this is a action item on our agenda, so is there anyone who's prepared to put forth a motion on this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-1773 to approve a 120 day extension for the purchase and development agreement between the City of Hudsonville and Terra Station LLC dated June 14, 2022.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. Jill, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullhays?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Mayor Portemalar?
Yes. That carries. Chris, just please continue to work through Tyler on this as we move forward.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next item, number eight. Is anyone willing to make a motion on number eight?
Motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed.
It's been moved and supported. Tyler, you want to say anything about this candidate for the library advisory board?
Yeah, I had a great conversation with Emily Brechtin regarding the roles and responsibilities of the library board. She's very passionate with the library system, her finger, large users. She believes in the programming of the library and frankly, with, with her experience and passion for the library, I believe her to be a great fit as a member of the library advisory board.
Did we get her name through, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and supported. This looks like it's just a voice vote. Okay, all in favor of appointing Emily to the library board, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Moving on to public safety, Chief Essenberg, you are up. And thank you for the role you played getting CSX in here. That was very informative.
It was informative, yeah, it was good. And if you ever have any questions on our response plan, we can talk about that too and what we would do in case of an event. Report for the month of June, we had 42 calls for service in the month of June, so that brings our number up to 284. So we're climbing rapidly and increased call volume. As of today, we are just over 300 already, so very quickly. Calls of note, the truck crash on 32nd was probably the most notable call. That was just prior to last month's meeting, but it was in the month of June and that was quite the event. And then we did assist the local township with traffic control for one of their accidents on the highway. It still seems to be a little bit of a bottleneck there with the construction traffic. So there's been a few accidents in that area. And then the, the rest of the report just goes through our training and some of the PR events. We are very busy in June, July, August with PR events. We're six weeks away from the fair, which is a busy week for us, so that's all upcoming. So we have a lot going on. Any questions? See you all Thursday night at the dump, okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Jeff, Sheriff's Department report.
Good evening. Thanks for taking my report late. I was on vacation and was unable to get it in at the deadline. Month of June was, I guess, more average than not. 249 calls for service to the city, 143 traffic contacts. One of the big things that I attended was the Superpole Sheriff's School. It was 205th grade students from the Hudsonville-Jennison community that went to rebounders. They were there from eight in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon and they got to see all the cool cop things that happened, aerobat landing and all kinds of... that happened, the aerobat landing, and all kinds of fun stuff. So all, all of the school resource officers from the entire county were at that event. So it was really well attended and really good. So also, I was, I had a four-day training. I've been on the honor guard for a year, but I have not gone through formal training because I do not come up often. So I had the opportunity to go through a four-day class for the honor guard, and got a lot of steps in and learned a lot. So I'll be doing some of our memorial services as well now, so good to do. Other than that, pretty, pretty normal month. Any questions at all?
I have a question.
Go ahead. You first.
Those digital signs, do you see an impact, like in how many interactions you have on Thirty Second, like prior to having the digital speed signs?
Personally, absolutely. Yeah, they're, they're very valuable. I mean, even when I'm in my personal video room and observing, it's just amazing how people, they all slow down because that person next to them is watching their speed as well. So they all slow down. So it's definitely impactful. I'd love to have a couple more eventually, so we'll see.
The trailer made an impact on Highland, I can assure you.
What's that?
The trailer made an impact on Highland when you had it.
I, I did not get the numbers for that yet, but I, it's printed out. I just have not looked at them yet. But it's, it's up there. So I'll get those numbers to you guys, too, because we had, we've been working with the residents as best we can. We've had the traffic service unit out there as well. The average speed is about forty-two, or the eighty-fifth percentile, no, average speed is forty-two, and a thirty-five. So it's, it's not horrible. So, but the traffic counting is definitely still way high.
Jeff, I have a question on your honor guard training you went to. Who does that? Is that like a state police thing? And where'd you have to go for it?
You know, there's only about, there's a total, I think there's two companies in the state that do it. But this year, there's Mark Brower. He is a Holland Peavy police officer, and he just has a passion for it, and he's making his own business. And he's done three schools so far, under the third school that he's done. And he did a fantastic job. We had five of our officers go through, including myself. So.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Emergency Management Dave, with your backup here, too. Thanks for coming.
Okay, so last month, a couple of items of note. On June fifth, I got to participate in a training exercise on the county EOC. And that was interesting. I got, my, my role was to sit in a moose chair, right, be the EOC director out there. And have a few, nothing major as far as takeaways, but a few things that get me thinking about our EOC here, of course, and our communication, and just making sure people have the right information at their fingertips, doesn't it? So we can, you know, roll that back into things here. The other thing I wanted to note was, there at the bottom, I mentioned the thunderstorm watch. I just wanted to let you guys know that a lot of times, for something like that, we don't come into the EOC, we monitor from home. JJ and I both have the ability to, you know, watch the weather radar, listen to the, you know, the, the traffic on the radio, and we have the number to call into the meteorologists at the National Weather Service. And so for something like that, where there's not an imminent threat, oftentimes we'll monitor that from home and then see if we need to come into the EOC as, as things develop. Any questions or comments?
One comment.
Go ahead.
Dave, I think it came up previously, but during my tour of the county administration building, being able to look at the EOC at the county level, the layout of it, it makes me appreciate and frankly feel a little bit safer seeing how organized and what the station's identified as. So I'm happy to hear you went through that, you know, training exercise there and use that, because I think it hands-on practically, even a mock situation has a benefit. But the commission was ever interested in checking something out, we can arrange it. But the equipment and the layout that was visible in Ottawa County, very much impressive. So really cool thing you got to be a part of, and just a testament to the county's operation.
Dave, I just have one for you. It's actually probably for the three of you. But are we all set for a fair week between the three of you guys and your staff?
We're, we're putting final details on it. One of the things that we actually will do differently from my team is get the traffic assignments done earlier. And that allows my team to actually be on, on scene a little bit sooner and take care of some of the early traffic and school buses and stuff. So minor improvements like that we're implementing this year. And I realize that that's a lot of words that might not resonate if you're not out there in context. But, and I, we should, I'm talking to Bonnie about setting up a meeting, or, you know, going to weather meetings, just to get any final details from the chairboard. We'll do that one in the next few weeks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
All set. Thank you. Moving on to finance, city treasures report. Tyler, would you go through those for us, please?
Commissioners, what you'll see in May, a little bit more volatility than, than usual, and, and for good reason. If you recall, the city received a grant as it relates to the purchase of SCBA equipment with the fire department. Again, kudos to you, chief. At that, we, what May represents in terms of the revenue and expenditures is the purchase, or the, us receiving the grant and us expending the grant.
And then distributing it.
And we did act as the fiduciary, it was a grant with two area townships, chief, with two area townships. So the volatility that you see there as compared to the previous months is, is due to that. Essentially, it's money in, money out. But nonetheless, we do a great job documenting when public funds are received and expended. So that's what you'll see in May as it relates to the general fund with revenues and expenditures. We'll probably have a little bit more of an in-depth report once we close up the June payables and receivables and give, I'll give a verbal year-end report with the data to show that as it relates to the general fund. But I'll go as far as saying the enterprise funds as well. The city did close up the fiscal year, which did conclude July thirtieth. Ashley and the finance team is doing a great job wrapping up year-end numbers, and we'll dive into those at your August meeting.
Is it your assumption that we'll meet our budget after we close up our numbers next month?
Yeah, once we get the final numbers coming up. Obviously, with it being a budget, it's not going to be exact. But in terms of case in point and the intent of the City Commission, I like our position.
All set for the finance report? Want to talk about investments real quick or not?
Yeah, I'll head on investments. Ashley and I have been meeting much more frequently than we have in the past. She's done a great job stepping in. One of the discussions that we've had as it relates to the finance report is looking at expiring bonds, shopping the market, continuing that practice that has been well established with the city. That's something that we'll continue to do. There's options out there as compared to what we've seen in the previous couple of years as it relates to interest rates. So we'll continue to be aggressive and continue that process in whole. But as you can see, I think in the last fiscal year, in talking with Ashley, we're looking just under eighty thousand dollars worth of investments. And depending on the city's general fund, which is very healthy, you know, all things equal, depending on the market, we'll continue to see an extra stream of revenue for that.
Thank you. All right, moving on to payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings interviewed by the finance committee.
Second that.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions on that? Okay, Jill, would you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Larrar?
Yes. Moving on, item twelve, ACH fund distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, which were distributed between meetings interviewed by the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Jill, can you do the roll on that, please?
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Larrar?
Yes. Moving on, administration, number thirteen, amendment to the GVMC Articles of Incorporation. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Amendment Number Forty to the GVMC Articles of Incorporation to remove the City of Hastings from the Metro Council.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and supported. As I understand, this is procedural only. Tyler, they are asking to leave the GVMC, so all members have to vote on this. But this is at the request of the City of Hastings?
That is accurate.
Okay. I saw Holland did it, I think, last week.
Did they give a reason for their request?
I didn't see one.
I did speak to Sarah Moirakel, city manager of the City of Hastings. They're kind of an outlier in the area. And they're, amongst their discussion, they just didn't see the value in it as compared to some other municipalities. And, you know, teach their own.
Jill, would you please do the roll on that?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes. Number fourteen, Peterson Agreement. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, accepting and authorizing the execution of the attached license agreement between the City of Hudsonville and Andrew Westley Peterson and Donna Ruth Peterson, a thirty-thirty-one Clearview Drive to allow for use city-owned property for a private golf course.
Second that.
It's been moved and supported. Tyler, would you give us a little background on this one, please?
Sure. In talking with staff, the city has, or has in this, in the past, discussed an extension of Highland Drive as such the property in question. It's not being utilized by the city right now. This is an agreement that was approved by the city in three years. This is an extension. There is a small amount of revenue we get for that if and when the City Commission funding and desire comes to be able to utilize that, what this agreement allows, allows us to immediately execute our desires in that extension with regards to that. So the agreement is nothing new, simply adds on, simply amends it to add on a three-year extension.
And how much do we get per year or per agreement?
One hundred dollars per year.
Did you happen to look up what the vote was on this the first time it came up?
You know what? I didn't have an opportunity to do that.
I remember it being a, a discussion item because of a precedent concern.
Lengthy discussion item.
It was precedent and liability concerns, correct?
Yes. That's how I remember it. You remember?
I remember big discussion. I don't think it was a split vote, though. I think it was.
I don't recall the vote.
I think it was seven.
You could be right.
But there were some, some concerns that were brought up.
Is the applicant here?
No.
Is this at their request or just something we're following up on?
We're following up with, with the extension with the three-year agreement expanding.
They didn't come to us, though?
Uh, you know what? I can't answer that. I don't, I'm not sure as much as city staff was alerted the agreement was, was ending. I did take a tour with Chief Essenberg a few weeks ago. The golf course is still there. And as such, yeah, the renewal was put forth.
If they didn't have a golf course there, do we mow it? In other words, they're
Yeah, or do it, does it just go wild, right?
Taking care of something so it looks nicer, doesn't cost anything for us to upkeep, as opposed to them taking care of it?
Is the liability concerned? I'm assuming it is addressed in the lease. Is that what it is, a lease?
Yeah, I believe there's a, the liability is addressed in the lease.
And if you can important note is, if and when the city chooses to exercise that option, the agreement allows us to do so in, in quick fashion as well.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Jill, can you do a roll on that, please?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes. That passes. Number fifteen, updated MDOT maintenance permit. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Two Three Dash One Seven Seven Four, performance resolution for municipalities with updated contact information in newly named authorized individuals.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and supported. Tyler, you want to give us a quick background on this one?
Yeah, I talked with Bob Miller prior to the meeting regards to this. It's boilerplate language. You know, as his memo states, it's an update of contact information, making sure we have the right individuals listed for work that needs to take place in the MDOT right of way. Pretty straightforward, just as simple and all.
With updates?
Yeah.
That's all. Okay. Any other questions for Tyler on this one? Jill, can you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes. That passes. Moving on to number sixteen, recommendation to award Thirty Second Avenue and Balsam resurfacing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to award Thirty Second Avenue, Balsam Drive resurfacing and pavement marking improvements, FNV project number eight, four, eight, seven, nine, oh, to Black Gold Transport, Inc., for the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and supported. Tyler, would you give us a little background on this one, please?
Sure. As stated in the CIP, this is a project that's been in the works. We did hold the bid opening, myself and representatives of the four companies that submitted bids were present, as well as Don DeVries, the city's engineer. In a change of pace and, and good news, the project cost came in under what was budgeted for. I credit conservative budgeting practices on our end, worst-case scenario, looking at the cost of labor and materials. This is a big win. Talking to Don and Bob, they have worked with and are very familiar with Black Gold Transport and their ability to do the work. They all, they are a smaller outfit, but they are a reputable outfit. One of the big questions, and once we get the approval here, we will hold a pre-construction meeting, discuss the next steps and timelines. We are going to work hopefully and aggressively to get the project done prior to school starting. Clearly, there's some details to be worked out there. I think on a, on a larger picture, with the savings from this, and we'll run those final numbers, we are now looking for some major street, we are looking at major street funding that now is available. And talking with Bob Miller, we have a couple projects that we might see that can be completed a little bit versus the CIP. But that's something we'll come with more information with, and I'll look at the City Commission's direction before we execute. But we came in under the estimated amount, I'm gonna say roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Don't quote me there.
That's rare since COVID hit.
Yes.
How does this correlate with the realignment that's happening further south?
Yep. So the realignment is the, the inch and a half Millenfield will take place. So we're talking about the striping, you know, essentially. So that will take place as part of this project.
How far down does Thirty Second, how far down Thirty Second does this take us?
Thirty Second to Allen.
So just shy of the high school?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Tyler on this one? Okay. Jill, can you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes. That is approved. Moving on, closing comments. So we will go down the table here. Tobin, you are batting leadoff. Any comments?
I got nothing, so I'm gonna miss.
Well, there was a Tigers no-hitter recently, so, okay. Tyler?
Yeah, one update I'd like to give the City Commission on is with regards to our vacant finance director position. The city received eleven applications of those. A member of the city's personnel committee, finance committee, myself, and HR Director Andrea, Andrea Rabinal met and attends to that meeting, was Commissioner Debray, as well as Commissioner Groth. We were very pleased with the applicant pool, looking at it. And as such, we're gonna be scheduling five or six interviews. I believe we have five of the six targeted scheduled for the next couple of weeks. At that time, we will hold the interviews. We believe that there'll be a second interview, more of an informal sense. We will look to seek in members of the finance department. We're still hanging out, or still hammering out a couple of those details. But I know we're all eager to get a new finance director hired, and I'm very optimistic based on the candidate pool.
Great. Thank you. Larry?
All right, thank you.
Dan?
Just, I really appreciated the CSX presentation. You know, obviously, with the events of the last year, it's been a concern, you know, running right through the middle of town.
Yeah.
Corbin off of my house. So I, I was impressed by the presentation and surprised by some of the things that were presented. It was very interesting, so.
Jack?
I will hopefully not be getting wet, but probably will be getting wet on Thursday night, and I hope to see you all in the tank.[1697.62]